Now we'll call the order of the regular meeting of the city council. Begin with our councilman reports on current events. You like to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have been enthusiastically jumping into city events. I attended the Hilltop groundbreaking. I attended our Westmark Economic Development Forum where the city of Litchfield Park did a great presentation. Randy did a presentation on Litchfield Square. That was exciting. I think that's the first time that we have participated in that forum. So I was really excited that Litchfield was there and present. And then I also attended just recently the Blue Star Moms Memorial Marker dedication.
Anything else to report?
That's it.
Thank you for your report.
Thanks for the pleasure. I also attended the Blue Star Mom Memorial Dedication. Thank you to city staff. I mean, it was a moving event. It's very neat that we have this marker in our city. So the effort that went behind it to bring it here. So thank you. I was going to acknowledge the Boy Scout and Cub Scout who were present because as soon as the event was over, they started stacking chairs. So it's cool to see their involvement and their dedication to the city as well.
Thank you. Councilman Claire Watson.
Attended likewise the groundbreaking for the high school up on the hilltop. And got to the invitation to attend the dinner following the. Yes, Mavericks, sorry, golf tournament. That was very nice and very well put on event. Trying to think, we also attended the West. Valley, Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce's gathering and that was good as well.
Great.
Oh, and have been to the. Saturday morning to the market over here. The, oh, yeah, I'm losing my words. Farmer's Market. Sorry about that. And it's, it's well attended and well done. So thank you for taking that. I have one question on that. Are they going to stay down there next year or will you move them up to the square? Okay. Well, it's, it's a good use. So thank you very much.
Yeah, Councilwoman James. Okay. Little back, I just, nothing, nothing to report.
Want to talk about the Maverick Golf? We did the Maverick Golf Tournament. Oh, yeah, that was two weeks ago Friday. Highly successful. I don't, I haven't heard what the numbers were, but you know, the primary beneficiaries make a wish. And then the rest goes into the Mavericks. For West Valley charities. Went to the hilltop like everybody else. I, I thought that was beautiful, but I mean, the, the one thing is if you look at it every day, the work that Kyle and his team is doing up there on the hilltop cleaning that up and getting that prepped for it's. You guys are working hard up there. Okay, there's my.
Great, Councilman.
I'm not going to say no report.
Yeah, I got to participate in the Pep Guzman Golf Tournament down at Palm Valley. Not just a Litchfield event, but a West Valley event that helped out with the West Valley Recreation League. And amazing amount of support out there. A lot of money raised, over 200 golfers. It was just great to see the energy, plus the kids with the recreation.
Great, thank you, Councilman Claire. Mr. Vice Mayor.
And that's a great program. I've donated to that for years. They do a great job. I attended the Two Lights for Tomorrow, which was at the State Capitol. There's a celebration, the beginning of the celebrations of the 250th anniversary of the US. It was quite an event, quite well planned. It was right on the front steps of the Capitol. The wind and rain came across, so it was, it's a cold windy night. So it wasn't very well attended. But it was a lot of work, a lot of planning went into it. I met with the mayor and staff with Liberty Utilities. They got a brand new president and. Things are going to go good. So let's hope that the new guy can shake things up and get Liberty. A great business and a great neighbor. I was at the Hilltop Groundbreaking with a lot of us, Chamber Annual Meeting at Phoenix Raceway. Mayor did a great job with this presentation of our local business. And then, of course, the dinner on the golf course that we'd want for the Mavericks golf tournament.
Thank you for your report. I'm going to just ditto pretty much the entire report of all these people you've heard because I was at most everything. About the only thing that was, that was not mentioned was we had a, and I think it was in the last month, was solar, solar panel installation dedication at St. Peter's Church, which was impressive. They have a significant number of solar panels that they've put on their recreation center or community center that will substantially reduce their need for electricity. And so congratulations to St. Peter's for getting that done. City manager's report. Do you have anything to add or to what's in your packet?
Mr. Mayor, just a few things out about the highlight and report, sir. Mayor Council, the report is in your packet. We just did a few things. One, staff is busy planning a Fourth of July event. That's been, it's been a while since we've had fireworks. So it will be on July the third, not the fourth, or the night before. So we will have our show on July the third and the Wigwam will have their own show on July the fifth. So we're going to be shooting our fireworks off from Scout Park. And those, some of you that have been here a while may have concerns about as far as where they're going to fall. And we did shrink the shells down to three inch shells because the bigger the shell, the more blowback or blowout they have. So anyway, but that will be on July the third and there will be an event that night in Litchfield Square Park to go along with that. Where the residents can gather to watch the fireworks and food trucks, et cetera. So staff is working on that. Someone had already said, thank you, that Public Works has done a great job on the hilltop. They've been up there. The old garage is gone. They've torn out a lot of salted cedars and that was something that staff did with Randall and did a real good job. It looks much better. They cleaned it up a lot, made it a lot more visible. Also, staff submitted a grant application to MAG for some money for Camelback, actually for $6.9 million. So that doesn't mean that we'll get it, obviously, but we hope that we do. We certainly appreciate that. You'll see the plans and the agenda tonight for the library plans. Also, staff is working with Pono and Lot 13 and 14. And hopefully that comes to DRV in June and to you guys as well for conceptual elevation. So hopefully that happens. As I said, on the, on the garage, also the train depot, the train depot, we worked with Goodyear for salvage on that. You may remember we had looked that we were going to salvage the building, but it was decided that it was a hazmat cleanup and it wasn't worth salvaging. So instead, what we did was basically we cut it up and salvaged all the historical pieces that we could, such as the windows, the sliding door frames, that kind of thing, the Litchfield signs and the chandelier. Also, I met with Goodyear Councilor Wally Campbell. There was about $10,000 that had been raised over the years for restoration of the train depot. And she is going to be giving us those funds. And we are going to direct those funds to restore the chandelier that was once in the lobby of the train depot. And we are going to restore that chandelier and hang it in the lobby of the new library. So we look forward to that with a nice plaque, obviously, to say where that chandelier came from. And also recognizing the organization that gave the funds for that. So I think that's a cool project to see that piece saved. So look forward to seeing that. You may have seen the lake bothered lights are being installed currently. So the conduit was being dug last week. I think we're still on schedule to finish those this week, Kyle. So if you get calls about the lake, that's what it is. So they're putting up the bothered lighting around the lake. Sorry, there's a lot of big items to hit on this month. Um, I thought it was interesting about Waste Management. So if you remember to the last RFP that there was two different rates. There's one rate for in-ground and one rate for rolling can. And we now have confirmed that less than 1% of our residents are in-ground customers. There's nine remaining in-ground cans. So it used to be more than that. It used to be about 12%. Now it's 1%, though that is changing. So anyway, just something to know for the future because if Mayor Council may remember, that makes us less competitive when we go out for a bit. Because just to be honest, nobody wants to service in-ground cans. In fact, the only company that did was Waste Management. So something to know for the future. And that was it. I welcome any questions if you have any at this time.
Questions from council.
Thank you. I was noticing in some of the reports that you had talked about the Ola West Valley and the city of Litchfield Park participating in that. And I just wanted to make a comment that I'm thrilled that Litchfield Park is kind of getting into the public arts space. I'm, and that's also something that Westmark has coordinated with some of the different cities throughout the Southwest Valley. So I'm really excited about that. And I know that that will fall under Parks and, and Rec. And I just wanted to say thank you for participating in that and kind of getting that off the ground. So I'm really thrilled to see what that looks like. Do we know what the timeline is for when that will be displayed? Okay. All right, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Like, oh, she likes Mayor. No, thank you, Mayor.
Just looking at your reports and stuff, Matt, and knowing what you're doing, you've got more on your plate than I think any city manager has ever had in this city ever. And you and your staff are doing a fantastic job trying to keep all these balls in the air and kind of keep track of all this. My congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. We are very busy and staff has got a lot on us right now too. And we certainly appreciate the compliment. Thank you, sir.
I wonder if you see the Gantt chart in your sleep at this point in the game.
No, 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 no Gantt charts in my sleep yet. We might get there.
Just one comment. That's the fireworks.
Yes, sir.
The, there were various reasons why we stopped having the city do a fireworks display.
Yes, sir.
One of the major reasons is that we had a tendency to light various trees and structures on fire in this fireworks show. And a lot of that was because, well, actually, I was the mayor, so I was partially to blame for this. That we didn't really have a designated safety officer who was responsible for safety as opposed to getting the show on. So all the people, the managers there, but they're, they're responsible. It was, let's get the show out there. All these people are waiting to see it. We need somebody, we need somebody in your staff. I would suggest somebody from the fire department, really. That whose job is not to make the show happen, but to prevent it from happening if it's all unsafe because of particularly wind. So I would suggest very strongly that we do that. And without that, I wouldn't support having the show. Because it's, it's a dangerous situation. It can be created. In a situation where you don't think it's dangerous, but your focus is on getting it to happen as opposed to making sure that when you make it happen, it's safe, it's safe for all the structures around here. Mr. Vice Mayor.
One of the last ones that the city did was at Scout Park. And it was, everybody was on blankets and stuff sitting around and the fireworks are going up. But the burning embers and the sticks and whatever were falling on the people that were sitting there watching the fireworks.
Yes, sir.
And there were burning embers that actually landed on the blanket I was sitting on in the park. So I would be very, very cautious.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And that's, that's a good comment. It's just something to know on that is the fireworks will be shot off of Sags Park, but are actually, our actual event will be in Litchfield Square Park. So you wouldn't have people underneath the fallen ashes unless, of course, it was a very, very windy day, which is to the mayor's point. And also for, so for every inch of shell, it's about a 70-foot range. So three inch shell about every 210 feet. So that's why we picked the diameter there. But I agree totally, if it was too windy of a day, we couldn't risk the embers blowing. So that would be something we would know to the day of.
If you get a shell that's not quite, you know, not quite up to snuff, you may end up with it laying, you know, depending on where these, you know, where you're aiming at. You could have it come down in an area that maybe you don't want it to come down in.
Yes, sir.
I just want, I just want to make sure we have a safety person there to make sure that someone isn't responsible for reviewing all that. And there, if there's, if it's unsafe, then we have somebody who's taking responsibility for it. Because then, right now, the responsibility is do we make the show come off? And that's, you know, that's one of the responsibilities, but it's not the only.
Agreed. Yes, sir. We will do that. Thank you.
I can do that, Mayor. I'm a killjoy, so. You will be a killjoy, but I don't know technically you're a lucky one. You can write paper about later. Okay, any other comments or questions for the city? All right, and I will go on then to the call with the community. We have one request to speak that I believe is called Community. And that's from Carter Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. As I'm sure you're aware, the Environmental Protection Agency has announced a rollback of PFS, PFAS chemicals. And my inquiry was, since I'm not a chemist, I'm not exactly sure which chemicals are involved in the North or the South Plume. And I was wondering if the city has any idea of what effect that rollback will have on our agreements with Liberty and the Air Force. Thank you.
Thank you. Our staff will be in touch. Okay, that takes us then to the presentation section. In your packet, you have a copy of a proclamation. Normally, this proclamation would have been presented at a flag raising, but it was realized by staff that the United States Merchant Marine is not actually a branch of the military service. So including them in our service birthdays was not probably proper. So we have changed that to recognizing the Merchant Marines and their service to the United States through the proclamation that we will recognize at council and then we'll post this online. So if you would remember that the Merchant Marines serve a very valuable function for our country. Still, that still does serve a valuable contribution to keep the seas open for the movement of freight. And it is particularly will be important in the future if we have different conflicts that come, that may arise over, over some of our friendly nations that may not be friendly for too long. Just remember the Merchant Marines. Next item is our Public Safety Monthly Reports. First report is from the Twentysquare Fire Department and we have Chief Luizy with us. See you this evening.
You as well. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Paul Luizy. Party in City Goodyear. So tonight, reviewing the April report. Probably one of the lowest months we've seen in a while. 54 calls. Forty-eight of those calls were medical related. So about 88%. None of those 48 came out of La Loma and eight of those were transported to the hospital. And then five at Las Cruces and all five were, were transported. I did follow the executive director at La Loma about that, that one call. It was that we were actually canceled and route to the call. So we never really arrived to the call. Didn't really seem any, any other issues or anything outstanding. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions from council. Don't see any questions. Thanks. Thank you, your, your guys for the service to our community. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next item is a report. Litchfield Park, Avondale Police Department.
Hello, Mayor and Council. This is Sergeant Ray Emmett, Avondale Police Department, presenting the report for April 2025. For April, we had 457 calls per service, which was up from 364 from April 2024. Again, a lot of it officer productivity. We had 64% of those were officer initiated compared to 36%, which were citizens calling in. And still the increase, still focusing on traffic, 128 traffic stops compared to 72 the year before. Increasing citations, 44 from 23. We had 94 business checks, 55 speed details. Focusing still on traffic. It was kind of a slower month, not a lot of big calls. You can see in the report there. So keeping that focus on traffic while we can also. Any questions from council?
Questions from council. Mr. Vice Mayor, what is Patrol Vacation Watch?
Patrol Vacation Watch is when somebody goes on vacation, they can actually call in and let us know they're not going to be there. Let us know like what type of vehicle, if any, are going to be there in the driveway, a phone number to contact them, any lights are going to be left on. Then the officers, every shift, you know, officer will drive by the house and check on it to make sure everything looks good.
Thank you. Any questions?
Will they feed the cat?
All right. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. Let your guys know they've done a great job in the community. We appreciate them very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, brings us to our staff report, which report is Finance. Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The full April finance report is in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions from council? Comments? Everything seems to balance again. It's good.
It looks good.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
I did have a question. I'm trying to find the page. I noticed that our taxes collected were down. Is that correct?
Taxes for what?
That's what I'm trying to find where it goes. I'm sorry. Revenue. You know what? Don't worry about it. I'll catch Paige later and ask her when I find it here.
I, I have it if you want me to just go over it briefly. Would you like me to just?
Sure, please.
All right, I just.
I'm sorry. It was a, and the number that looked really high, we've got two in there that are, the interest income is 230% of the budget.
Yes, our interest earnings.
Sorry, it wasn't taxed, but yeah, so we've done well with interest.
Yeah.
And miscellaneous, you have 235% of the budget.
So the, the miscellaneous, the biggest part of, or the biggest chunk of that is our tower rent and then refund that we get from the insurance. And then the other are events that we're not anticipating, such as insurance reimbursement, like when the roundabout gets hit and after it goes through insurance, then we get reimbursed. We put all of that in miscellaneous. So it's things we don't, other than $100,000, it's odd things that happen throughout the year that we don't anticipate happening.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, see, then we'll move on. Thank you for your report. Next item is the contamination. Says, that family graduation. Do we have a report other than what's in the packet?
Um, Mayor and Council, the report is in the packet. I did have, give me some notes on this item. We're going to have his notes, then me try to speak something on it, to be honest. On PGA Plume and Luke AFB PFOS. And PFOS, of course, is what Carter was asking about. Um, the no movement this last month. PGA continues as they have been with monitoring wells, extraction wells and injection wells. And we should have revised maps in the early to mid part of the summer. And also from Luke, we're not expecting any data back from Luke until June, per the agreement.
Okay, any questions or you have for either of these topics? You know, Keith will be back in the office later tomorrow, so you can welcome to call. Contact him or contact the city manager. Mr. Williams, you're going to provide the update on CIP projects, says here, yes?
Um, Mayor and Council, we do have some CIPs that are getting going now. As you remember, some, a lot of them are on hold. Of course, we were waiting to finish at Litchfield Square. You may have noticed right now there are some bollards going in at Litchfield Square. That is for the intersections. That's to make our events safer. So we added some additional bollards there because you're just, again, just trying to keep roads as safe as possible. One of the intersections at Litchfield Square doesn't have a roundabout, which is a honeysuckle and desert. So that one involves a little more bollards because it does affect how cars can weave in and out anyway. So if you see parts of Litchfield Square closed right now as far as the lanes, that's why. Because we're putting additional bollards in. And if you go to look at those, you can see the plates, they're, they're hard to see unless you're looking for them. But basically, so we can have removal bollards for the events. Public Works can easily drop those in place and again, make our event safer, is the idea for that. Also, there's an item on the agenda tonight for Camelback Park parking. If that is approved, we'd like to see that project hopefully get going by late June. Um, as you know, we're very, staff is very busy with the plans for library with AgroFria. And hopefully get a contractor lined up shortly for that. There's an item again on the library tonight as well. Staff is working also on the design for, for Scout Lodge. Again, we are planning to move that. And those designs include replacing or bracing the roof, whatever it needs. Uh, replacing with a modern heating and AC, so on and so forth. And also making ADA restrooms inside and having separate restrooms on the outside for Scout Park so they wouldn't mingle. Because again, if you know Scout Park currently, there are no restrooms out Scout Park. So again, there would be restrooms inside Scout Lodge and outside Scout Lodge because they're for two different reasons, if that makes sense. And we're going to be meeting with the Scout Lodge people as well too, as far as the lease. Because obviously, there's some conflicting interests there. We're working on that. So a lot of things going on. Any questions as far as CIP parties, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor. Do we, do we know we can actually move the lodge? Has it been engineered, looked at that and figured out we can pick it up and move it across the street?
They think they can. Yes, sir. Basically, it would be sawn off the slab, we'd pour a new slab and set it down on the new slab. So they think it can be done. Obviously, it doesn't crack in the process.
Yeah, the fireplace inside, it presumes a different story.
That's a different story. That's correct, sir. We've talked about the scouts with that before. Basically, dismantling and making that into something new outside Scout Lodge when it moves across the street.
How long will the scouts be out of the lodge?
Oh, I don't know. Um. I, I, I wouldn't want to try to guess that, to be honest.
Assist them with an alternate location or a church?
We could certainly try, yes, sir. And something interesting, I've also had some contacts from other community groups that would like to use Scout Lodge. For example, I had a VFW group reach out this week for that. So. And that's a little complicated for our newer council members in that Scout Lodge is owned by the city. But currently, the only group that I'm aware of that uses it are scouts, or scouts, and boy scouts, girl scouts, et cetera. So it, it gets interesting. But it is a city-owned building and it is city property. So it's going to be picked up across the street and moved there into the dirt area of Scout Park.
It's only been city property for eight years, maybe?
Yeah. I think so. When, when we got Scout Park?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Now that we're spending a lot of money on getting it, you know, moved and refurbished and.
That's correct.
Updated, there's going to be more scrutiny on using in a way that's appropriate for our city, for city property.
That's right.
Councilman Allen.
I just have one comment. Thank you. Before we start a project, is there a way that we can communicate proactively with the community so that they know what to expect? For example, I know that we were redoing the lighting around the lake, the fishing lake. And people did not seem to be aware that that was coming. And so if we could announce it via social media or some way to communicate with folks so that they know what we're doing before we do it, so that they're not caught blindsided.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I, I think we certainly could. And to be honest, I think it'll be, it'll be a good news story to see Scout Lodge actually picked up and moved. So it doesn't happen that often. And to the mayor's point, he's right. Part of the main concerns with Scout Lodge is that it's gifting cost. Because right now, it's only used by the scouts and we own the building. We do some basic maintenance on it. But we think it's going to cost about $300,000 to pick it up and move it and do the renovations that it needs. And when we do that, that's great. It needs to be done, but it's also going to have to open it up to other groups to use it. Something to be considered.
We just, you know, maybe we need to have a public information officer to do something.
And the vice mayor has acknowledged that the city staff is very busy.
Very busy.
And this will be a perfect opportunity.
Okay, anything else on special? Oh, no, no, we're going to go to special projects. We're not going to skip special projects. No, no, no. Randy, wait in with breathing breath.
Mayor, members of the city council, good evening, ready, coach, your special projects manager, planning director, et cetera, et cetera. The call comprehensive report is included in your packet regarding Litchfield Square, La Loma and the Thomas Projects. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Another thing that was included, and you'll see it's included every month going forward, is the Gantt chart that is tracking the eight, 12 different projects that are all simultaneously occurring at La Loma. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Is there an update on the building permit for the Akamazo's project?
Vice Mayor, thank you for asking. As of this morning or yesterday morning, Liberty has signed off those plans and now we can release them for construction.
Fantastic.
That's excellent. I'm sorry, Councilman James.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question on, I know we're still in the preliminary stages with Lot 13 and 14, but with the whole magistrate court and everything and, but the removal of the trailer, what, do you have a timeline on that or an update on when that's?
We would plan for that this summer, Councilman James. It may very well end up being a staff office waiting at the hilltop as we get underway on actual hilltop projects. We may, we may locate it up there so the staff can use it up there. But yes, it would be this summer.
Um, just a request for the Gantt chart. You know, month to month, things will slide. Construction projects always do. If you can highlight things that are significantly wide, why they're sliding and which ones they are and like how far to push back. It's Liberty, if it's the county, if it's us, you know, I think the city would like to know when, when things are going to be delivered and if they're not going to be delivered on a certain date, why?
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent, thank you.
That's a very good point. The, the things that are, the, the things that are listed on this Gantt chart, things themselves, you need to change each month so that we look at the part of the chart that's really relevant to what has to get done this month. And so then I can focus in on things that are happening when they have to happen and things that don't happen and what the impact might be. And it would be nice to have that as a, as a, as part of your report. So that as opposed, the trouble with this Gantt chart is that it is, it's a physically large thing that you can't really transmit easily electronically. And there's an awful lot of things that are behind each of these entries on this chart. That this is a good, it's a good, you know, it's intended only to summarize, that literally in there, there could be arguments about whether it's got the right things on it to be a good summary. And that would be helpful to have council input on. So if there are things that you want to know about that you don't see on here, then if you can ask about it, number one, we'll make sure that it's, that it's being, that it's behind this and it's in this Gantt chart. But also it might change the way we present the Gantt chart to the council. So you can stay up to date on, on the things that are supposed to be happening that are critical for the project to move forward. So it would be, it'd be good to start, it's, we'll have, you know, have a report, actual report on it each month. Where we put it up on the big board and we can
Certainly.
council can answer the questions about it.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions?
Thanks, you have it.
We won't let Randy get off that easy.
We'll be back.
No, no, no. Okay, next item is magistrate first court report. That's in your packet. That brings up our consent agenda, item eight. Item A through E, is there any item on the consent panel that any member of the council would like to take off the consent agenda? Motion to approve. Is there, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is adopted as presented.
Just a quick note. I don't even need to put that $400,000 in the contract in that blank. It's in the whole reports and stuff, but there's a blank on the contract.
For that actual number?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The first item of business is a public hearings. Call the, I'm going to call the public hearing, declare the public hearing to be open. Concerns of liquor license application for the Green Olive Bar and Grill. Is there a staff report?
Just a brief one, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now, the city received the application April seventh. They are leasing the property formerly known as Ground Control. And they re, applied for a series twelve, which allows them on sale retail privilege, but they must they must get their revenues 40% sales from food in this series. State law requires that the property be posted 20 days prior to the hearing, which it has been. Council's duty is to either make a recommendation to approve, disapprove, or make no recommendation. Staff recommends that council to approve. And Ms. Morris is here, the applicant's agent, to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, does the applicant have a presentation you'd like to make or?
Mayor.
Welcome. First, let me say, welcome, yeah, welcome to our community. We're happy to, happy to see you making investment.
I got doc surgery, excuse me. It's been a long while since I've been out here and I am totally impressed. And it's quiet. I live in the East Valley, but of course I drive to Phoenix a lot, so it was quite a trek. But if you have any questions, I'm a retired police officer of 26 years here in Arizona. I worked at Arizona State Liquor. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to this license.
Questions from the council? I think we just want to say welcome to the community.
I love it.
Yeah, we're glad to see you investing out in a business that, it's been in a business that's been important to our community for a long time. But it's needed some new stewardship. So we're happy to see you out here offering that.
The owner is present and the primary goal is to be a restaurant and the alcohol service is just to complement the service of the food. So the clerk is correct, the state requires at least 40% sales of food. And I know she's going to be doing that as a matter of training.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
All right, is there any, are there any questions from the council? No. Is there any, are there, is there any presentation or questions from the public on this item?
I think I see one.
Looks like the public just walked up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Carter Wilson, the Greens. I think it's a great thing that we have someone to come in as quickly and fill that spot. And I highly recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes the public hearing, so a close to public hearing. Next item on our, on our agenda is the consideration of whether to recommend or not recommend or take no action on the application for a liquor license as presented in the public hearing. Are any comments by council?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any comments or any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll send our recommendation, unanimous recommendation to, to the liquor license board.
Are you, are you open yet?
Yes, we are opening already. We are a vegetarian restaurant, but we also have a couple of foods. We're been serving food for about 10 years now. And we did, I have an uncle who had a restaurant in the same apartment. It's called Alabrias.
Oh, Gilbert.
That's my uncle Gilbert. And it's the reason why I chose Litchfield Park, because he talks, he loves Litchfield. And he said, we want, we want to bring the great terracotta.
If your food's as good as Gilbert, she'll do great.
Yeah.
No competition.
I know, it's hard.
Oh, well.
But thank you so much. I appreciate that. Everyone, welcome.
Welcome to, welcome to the community. We appreciate your investment. All right, it takes us through the approval of excuse me, the conceptual design for the Academy and Performing Arts Center.
Well, hello again. Yeah, for the record, ready approach, your planning director. This is a long time comes and I'm glad we have the people in the room that we do have. There's a lot of partners in this room tonight in the audience that helped us get to where we are tonight. I'm going to try to be brief, but it's hard to be brief about such an important project and what it represents going forward. So formally, this is item IC. It's the Agrofria School District's Academy and Performing Arts Center, now known as the Hilltop School for the Arts and Theater. The applicant is the school district, the address is tentatively, the building, the building area, five three five six North Litchfield Road. And the request is a new high school campus for about 400 students and a 700-foot theater at Rancho Lalo. The reason this is before you this evening is any properties located within the Agroporsum District or Litchfield Square require any sort of design plans to be recommended by DRB and approval by C Council. So this is a discussion tonight about the design of the campus and now, one of the things that's known widely, but we like to always put it out there for everyone to know, there's, this isn't a sports kind of high school. There are no fields. They do have a mascot just for the various performances and those performances are not on the field. Those performances are in, on stage, they're in theaters, they're in concert halls. This is a performing arts theater and performing arts high school by all accounts and academics, as it were. Now, the other thing that I really wanted to point out tonight, and we talked about this briefly at our public open house meeting we had in January, as all of this was coming to be realized very quickly, we wanted at least to get out there to talk about how the rest of the hill can complement this use. One of the things that was done about 22 years ago now is the La Loma Homestead plan. And Molly Jenny Paul Litchill, someone who married, you know, the daughter Edith, had written several letters to Horatio, the city manager at the time, and Woody, the other Woody Thomas, mayor at the time. And he was concerned that when we adopted this plan in 2003, there was going to be a commercial component to it. There was going to be a commercial center. There's going to be a large parking lot. He was really troubled by this and he had written several letters and really wanted to emphasize the historical, social, and cultural uses that were always intended to. We're happy to say that this school is going where that commercial center would have gone. So we feel very thankful for the families for their initial dedication to us, very thankful for our partners at Sun Health, the school district. You know, all of our consultants that are helping us get to this point where we are with you tonight. Now, the other thing that is unique for us is normally the schools would declare immunity and correctly point out that state law allows them to bypass me, your planner. Because they are under this agreement with us, this ground lease and development agreement, because it is our land and through our partnerships with the school district, they were willing to come before us, to come before you as part of this design, to have these conversations, to have this collaboration to get to where we are tonight. There isn't chain link, there isn't concrete block that's exposed that you see in some other high schools. We're very thankful for this partnership and showing it to you this evening. Now, this version of the site plan, I'll call out if I can, the main house is still right here on top of the hill. Cottage three and cottage two, as well as the van, sand and the tank. This site plan is version 16 amendment G, I think is the fairest way to say that. This has been a conversation since last summer to get to where we are today. And it represents our best efforts to stay away from the homestead to the extent possible. I say stay away, the other thing that you could say, maybe in a better sense, is to coordinate with their homestead. With everything that they had, the old pool, the parises, the cottages, we have tried our best to complement that use in this area that had never been never been cited for any sort of amenities or activities, again, other than the commercial site. That red is where that commercial center would have been. The building surrounds a large parking field in the middle. So, you know, as mentioned once more, having this in place of that commercial center to help, fell some of all those concerns is awesome. Now, just to talk about the site in a little bit more depth, let me go back for you. I'm getting ahead of myself. Majority of the parking is located along the south side of the site to the west of the theater. The theater is this large building right here. And then the academy are these three buildings down. Depending on which page you read in your package tonight, you may see this building as one, you may see this building as two. Why it looks the way it does is once the kids are all out of school, they're dismissed through this breezeway on the first floor to the bus bay, which is on the south end of the site. The second floor hovers over that breezeway. So it is, in a sense, one building that's been swiss cheesed, I guess you could say, on the ground floor, get those kids to the bus bay. The other thing that does is it separates bus traffic and the school traffic for parents picking up as well as when the events let out and come in for the theaters. So our seats can flow up to the main entry through the roundabout and back on their way. So that means deliveries, that means eighteen wheeler, that means the band in their van with all their equipment all come in separately and load up right next to the theater's entry. This is all specific tailored and designed accordingly to every sense of those 16 amendments that we got through. The main entry and the main drop off is located on, let's call it the center of the site. There's a nice drop off terrace. I'm just explaining this in a flat view, but I have much better pictures coming up in this presentation. Now, as far as this floor plan goes, and this is a slice off the roof so you can see the inside of the ground floor as it's grown. The theater here is in building D, as we're calling it, that entryway, the foyer, the I'm losing my words, but we have the architect here that uses the better words than I do. The lobby, there's the word, can seat a few hundred people. So you could do separate events here as well as in the theater. The other thing not shown is on the second floor of Performing Arts Center is a restaurant that'll serve guests before or after shows. They're done together. The classroom spaces are all located within buildings A, B, and C with the main office here along building C. As far as the pictures go, we're going to go flat pictures and then we'll do the three dimensional pictures that show how this will look in real life. The main entry is here that'll face north, that'll face that main entry driveway that'll face towards the library here, first the administrative offices. Classroom spaces are along here. You'll see that breezeway and that secured area that'll take you from the north side of the site to the south side of the bus bay. And then there is a stairwell feature here and a few stairwells actually on the theater itself as well. Something else that's very unique for us and for the collaboration and the harmony amongst all the different things going up on the hill is the school campus itself is secure, certainly for the student safety. However, the parking lot, the main entry drives are open because we do expect as mentioned, many events happening in the evening hours at the theater, as well as those looking to enjoy the park and all that space within the parking lot here on the south side, as well as the future one on the north side within the library. Here's some metrics of it. I'm going to breeze through these because better pictures are coming up. This is a three dimensional look at that academy building. Now, as far as the theater, the main entry in those large glass windows facing north, and that's intentional. Those face north towards the homestead, towards the hill, looking up at, you know, the future museum and the cottages as well. The primary entry is going to be greatly seen and shown from that main entry as we come in. It faces northeast. So as you enter the site, there'll be a very clear sightline to that main entry feature. Again, here is the accent, magic, accent, logic. Thank you. Fancy the architecture words. I changed majors very quickly on university. That's a different story. Now, here's where we get into the, the more clear representation of what's coming. And this is all coming next August, as quickly as we possibly can. You can see the roundabout here at Brenton Avenue. The Sunset Terrace neighborhood would be off screen, bottom left, let's call it. So you are looking southwest. We're going to basically fly into the site from furthest to closest. Stepping a little closer through that roundabout, you start to get a sense of how this scales and looks in comparison with the cottages in the main museum up on top of the hill. The other thing that does come into play here and it's shown on the very right hand side of this slide is this is set as low as a possible can be. We do not want to encroach on that view at all possible. So this is set down as much as possible. It's 37,000 cubic yards of dirt that's going to be pushed and pulled and put in other places on this hill to create this lowered site. When you do create that lowered site, you have to retain that site. So that hill in the true sense of the cottage just here on the right hand side, on top of those terrace walls, those terrace walls covered in shrubs, vegetation and vines within a few years, we hope, so that it'll essentially disappear. Now, that we've driven through the campus, now we're in that main parking lot there at the west end, there's a center spine sidewalk that connects all the cars that do park. Those patrons then walk across that designated parking lot and that crosswalk, you can see the restaurant here on the second floor. There's interior stairwell that climbs up and takes you across into that theater. Everyone else that is going to the show would carry around and through the side of the building to that main entry in the northeast. So. Then here's a look at the, it's called the rear or the side of the road. This would be the bus bay. You can see there's, there's clear architectural embellishments on all sides of this building. Perhaps I haven't talked about it enough, but this should look and feel just as we have expected it to. This is quite an evolution of where we started. Certainly, those features are well put and well done on this building. It isn't just parapet. It has, you know, the sloped roofs at key points. Even the kids waiting on back are shaded and secured from any sort of weather events as they're waiting for the buses. These sorts of features are consistent throughout the building. You know, there is movement in these roof lines, which movements in the plane and the facade of the building throughout all sides of these buildings. Now, as far as where analysis goes. Now, as far as where analysis goes, as far as this design and this conversation that started again last summer with our free, we're so excited to have them as our partner. We think that they are this catalyst that's brought a lot more interest and timeliness essentially to restoring this hill to what was planned in two thousand and three with that home sit plan. We have carefully cited this location for their campus as best we possibly could for everything that we're trying to fit. The other thing I did mention was included in the report, this is the least amount of parking we could possibly do. And that's the only accomplishment because the theater and the school will not operate simultaneously. So this is for one or the other, not for both, to make sure we are minimizing our encroachment into this hill. Now, we do believe this meets the intent of our zoning code, and again, advances the low level planning committee's desires in two thousand and three. So our recommendation for you this evening is to approve the Oliveria Union High School District Campus. We call it case number PZ twenty five oh six, five three five six, Litchfield Road. They submit to the exhibits within your packet and seven stipulations I will read for you. Whoever wants to make the motion does not need to reread them. I'll do that for you right now. Number one is substantial conformance to submitted plans is required. A alteration Dean Major will require a new review recommendation by the designer review board and approval by city council. What that means is as these projects evolve, sometimes design devolves, I guess you could say, lessons. And if there is anything that we feel is, though, does not meet what we've presented to you this evening, it will be paused. It will be determined and brought before designer review and for your review once again. Number two, the building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. Number three, any outstanding red line comments will be addressed during civil and building plan review. What you see before each night is still the concessionables. The building plans are now under review, so there are some things that have adjusted. If it was a teal, announced turquoise, if that roof line was fifty four feet, now it's five feet, little things like that can occur. Certainly, any sort of final tweaks will be done during the construction. Number four, the following plans will be required during civil permit review to be submitted up to the site plan approval. These are all as mentioned in number three, all the symbols that are required that aren't part of our site plan review. Five, civil and building, civil and building plans made review concurrently approved but cannot be released for permitting into delivery utilities. You get your fire department have also approved the project. We have partners in this that we need to make sure that everyone's on board. Six, conceptual signage, you may have seen some signs on that building are not reviewed as part of this application design and does not include your signage. A CSP conference assigned program will be coming So finally, number seven, app can meet all required stipulations and conditions of the joint development agreement and grounds. I have not restated the entirety of that packet, certainly that development agreement you've approved late last year still governs and supplements anything that's listed in these seven stipulations. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The team from the architects and from the school district are here for you this evening as well.
Thank you very much for, excuse me, for your presentation. Before we get into questions, which I'm sure there will be some from the council, I want to just say to the Oliver Free people that it's I'm extremely pleased that you have, you've made the decision to take the risk of building this project on the hilltop. The initial conversations that we had about whether this project would fit in Litchfield Park and the concept of putting on the hilltop, I think was absolutely reasonably met with a lot of skepticism. It didn't, if you look at the hilltop today and you think, do I really wanna invest this kind of money and rely upon the fact that by the time that we're done building this school, that the city will will be able to transform the hilltop with other things that have to happen so that the hilltop is an appropriate place for this investment. So the first thing is just thank you to Oliver Free, to the staff at Oliver Free, because I know that the staff is, you know, you have your reputations online with your board. And we're happy that you and the governing board chose to go down this path. So thank you. The other thing I want to say is thank you for agreeing to submit the project to our city process. This is a really big deal for schools here. Schools don't have to deal with cities. And schools don't, quite frankly, I think when they look at dealing with the city, it's like, you know, how can we possibly choose something that is so stupid and time consuming and frustrating? And we appreciate that there has been some, there's been some pushback, you know, because of that process that you guys are going through that you really don't have to do and you're going through it with, you know, with our staff that's, you know, has got they view things differently than a school reviews it because they're from the city and they are normal, they normally have input into these kinds of decisions and so it's good that both our staff has been flexible and the Oliver Free staff has been flexible and that we've gotten this far. This is wonderful. You've produced a tremendous, a tremendous achievement to get to this far. And that's the final thing I want to say thank you on is having been through, you know, many discussions with staff as these negotiations and discussions were going on with Oliver Free. I can tell you, Oliver Free has been tremendous and tremendously flexible to literally find the very best site on that hilltop. Both for the city, for the school, and for the museum. There were, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of dirt being moved, quite frankly, just to make sure that this large structure does not block views from the museum and from the bandstand and those kinds of things. That for the city was very important, but for the operation of the, from our freestanding point, you know, it didn't help their, doesn't help their building. But it helps the overall project. And we appreciate the fact that Oliver Free has been willing to go through and make the adjustments so that the project can work for everybody. So with that, if there are questions from individual council members, and the first person who actually had their hand up is Councilman Allen, so we're gonna recognize Councilman Allen first.
Thank you. Randy, I was just wondering if you had a view of the school from the homestead.
Mayor Councilmember Allen, the, I had the inverse of that image, but not really in the same sense.
Is that it in the background?
This would be the main tell me if that's cottage, three year cottage, main cottage.
Okay.
Could be one of the other. I do not have one from up high looking down, unfortunately.
Okay, I just wanted to see if there was the reverse perspective on that. I think the design looks really great.
Sorry?
I think the design looks really great.
And it has, it has true changed tremendously. Again, our free has been very flexible and they brought us a project that fits in, fits in perfectly.
Just a, an aside on this is that even on this slide, I love the fact that you brought the peacocks in. You know, my wife grew up here and one of the things she talks about are the peacocks that were up on that hilltop. And how much they enjoyed that growing up and having that there. So to have some homage back to that is really important. And I think it shows the dedication that you guys have had to try and rectify to the family's wishes and pay homage to that.
Vice Mayor.
Randy, one of your first slides that you showed was a site plan.
Get there just now.
That one. That shows the theater is being darkened out and to be a future project, not part of this current project. Is that not part of this current project?
Mayor Vice Mayor. Why the color change? I would have to defer to the architects as far as their decision to do so. However, I will tell you that the one hundred percent construction plans for the academy have been submitted. The one hundred percent plans for the theater are forthcoming. They are looking at this as a two stepper, per se. The timelines are still on track of what we are anticipating from both. However, we have a greater opportunity to start the academy almost immediately. There are some overhead APS lines in the way of the theater that we are working our, we are working every angle we can with APS to get those moved as quickly as possible to address their desires to then push dirt for the theater and build where the theater is being located. So I'd say they're three weeks behind where the academies, that's the only reasoning why it would have that word there.
Should that be stipulation number eight that we're building them all?
This is gonna be in the motion. Whoever makes the motion is gonna gonna move that we approve it without the word future. It's throughout, well, it's throughout, it's throughout these drawings. I mean, in some basically, the drawings do not, in many cases, they don't show building D. But they, they show A and B and C, but it's not clear what D is. There's the, if you look, if the, with the black and white floor plan that you showed us first is one of the only drawings where it's very clear that D is the theater, that one. So the motion should be to approve these documents, but with the amendment that with the understanding that D and future are the same.
They're all, it's all being held at once.
Yeah, I don't know why they use the word future. It's the word future that causes the misunderstanding, the confusion.
I'm just a little concerned because we went to this with Sun Health and that thing that was supposed, wasn't future, was supposed to be built now, ain't built. And we're not seeing any movement toward getting built the restaurants and the community center and the stuff that they were that they brought to us as part of that. Right, had approval project before and just wanna make sure we understand what we're getting, that it's all being built.
Yes, Vice Mayor, and those contractual conditions and dates are outlined within that joint development agreement and grounds as well.
You're coming, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I want two quick things. Randy, maybe the one I was gonna say then on the, on the DA is that there are late fees in the DA that apply for the city. And they also apply for our free. If either party doesn't meet our required dates, those are, those are in the DA. And prior discussions, it's our understanding that the only possible delay would be the TIs in the theater. And we expect the TIs in theater to be done around October. Is that correct?
I do have Jennifer sitting behind me that would have those exact dates if we want to bring her up.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind, sir?
No, not at all.
Yes, ma'am. I was just asking, correct me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding, the only possible delay on the theater would be that the outside of the theater would be done. But if there was any delay after the opening of the school, which would be in August, would be the TIs for the theater, so the inside of the theater. And we'd be looking at those to be finished around October twenty twenty six. Is that correct?
That is what we are tracking currently. As Randy mentioned and some other people mentioned, the the only reason why we're not building the theater concurrent with, with A, B, and C is because we have those APS lines are in the way. So as soon as they're out of the way, then the theater will go full speed ahead. The critical deadline for the school is that, you know, school starts end of July, August of twenty twenty six. We have to get going on that. The theater has a little more flexibility and that it could open a couple, couple months later. Because it's not tied to a school year curriculum. But absolutely, that's the only reason why that building is separate. Because when we go for building permits, we have to permit a whole package and we didn't want the theater to not be done and hold up certificate of occupancy for the rest of the school. But yes, our intent is that that theater is done in October. But every day that APS doesn't give us our approval, that, that timeline keeps moving forward.
Yeah, there's, hopefully, Oliver will understand, you'll understand that the council's got sensitivities about labels because we've had people come back and say, well, that's not what it's labeled. That's not what we meant. And it's like, well, no, we talked about this. We know exactly what you meant. So it's just, we're, we're gonna be very careful with the, with the labels that we put on things, particularly that you know, that we really, you know, this, this is, it's one project. Now, if we have to do it in two pieces because APS, you know, that's absolutely understandable. We just don't wanna, but we don't wanna label it as a future building. It's a, it's a current building, but it just may not get built at exactly the same time.
Yeah, perhaps we should have said under separate permit, but yes, it's, it's, it's there. As Randy mentioned, we've already submitted for building permitting for the ABC and the theater will be going in for permit next week.
Great. Yeah, it's, it's perfect. Any other questions?
The electrical line must be relocated by APS. Does that also serve the historical society's museum down on the corner?
Down on Camelback?
Right.
Um, no, it's a completely separate line.
Okay, so they won't be without service?
No, they will not. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of complications with the electrical line. The, the major contributing factor is the cell, cellphone tower on top of the hill is we have to, we cannot have them down for more than a couple hours when they cut the line and plug the new one in. So we are going through lots of logistics with APS to actually construct a temporary power line just to the south of our property to bring that into play before we disconnect the other ones. And that's what's taking so long is the, the temporary design timeline with, with APS. We are in that process right now. But the way that's tracking is that it's going to be until essentially October of this year until those lines are completely out of the way and they can fully start grading where that, where the theater pad is.
Thank you.
Cell tower line runs through the theater pad, not through the parking lot?
The electric.
Power line.
Yeah, the cell tower line.
Yeah, so right now, the, the, both the power and communications lines that run up to the cellphone power. Essentially, they kind of go through the bus loop. And then they get to about halfway through the parking lot to the west there, and then they run diagonal through the parking lot and then up to the cell tower. So we are intercepting them pretty much just right south of the theater. We're gonna bring them above ground. Set temporary poles, string the power, go across the parking lot and then back down to intercept in a vault that's there already where they, where they go up. And that's gonna be for both APS and COGS.
Any other comments or questions?
Just a question on the landscaping palette. So we've done, we've talked a lot about what you feel of what's still parked. There are no orange trees in the landscaping palette. You know, noted here, you know, I don't know how involved the city is, but I do notice that ADM is doing both the library and this high school. Is the intent basically to use the same landscaping palette over the entire hilltop? So it's cohesive? If so, you know, doesn't match what we have here, you know, with the orange trees that line Litchfield Road with the orange trees that line Old Litchfield. Mayor Councilmember Fraser, I'll try to break apart your questions one by one. The video and landscape architect, desert adaptive are involved in the, the school and the library. And there are some things better suited for parking lots, better suited for street frontages that are I hate to say more generic, but more more common, I'd say. The rest of the hilltop, however, is, I think it's part of the conversations coming up here in the library and part of the monthly report. The landscape architect for the rest of the hilltop is the same that did the Japanese Friendship Garden and half of Desert Botanical Gardens. And we were specific and intentional in finding that person and bringing them on board to look at the rest of the site holistically. That's more in line with that Litchfield Park square. We are not looking to replicate the grassline meetings and palms and citrus trees that are more consistent with our downtown and with this area of the Tiara Verde Village. If there is an interest in maybe harmonizing and bringing citrus trees up there, we can certainly look into that. That's your direction.
I was just curious. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but, you know, I did, did notice that those are missing.
Water intensive, for sure.
Orange trees are problematic a little bit with water department. Bringing in significant numbers of orange trees. We have tried to do that years ago, and even when it wasn't as much pressure on water, you were basically told, no, you can't do that. You can't have new orange tree. So, but I, I'm sure that within the work that we're gonna have done by the, by the landscape architect for the hilltop, we're gonna see plans on that. We'll have an opportunity to comment, correct, Mr. City Manager?
Correct, sir.
Yeah, so that would be, when we get, when we get a plan, it will be the appropriate time to ask those questions. That, and that person should be able to answer whether, whether there's things that we can change that would make it more tied in. Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the proposed conceptual designs for the Oliver Free High School District Academy and Performing Arts Center located at fifty three, fifty six North Litchfield Road? For the Alfraya High School District Academy and Performing Arts Center located at fifty-three, fifty-six North Litchfield Road? And I'm sure there's some magic language I'm supposed to say, PZ something, and I don't have it here in front of me, so.
That's right. Requirement of race?
Yeah. PZ twenty-five oh six with stipulations one through seven. And with the additional stipulation that is understood that whenever the word future is used for the Arts Academy building, it really means. The letter D, which is the, is the. Elevations and isometric views of the building that are in these plans. And that this, you know, is that A, B, and C and D are part of one project. Is, is it, is there a motion to that effect? Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, approved. We have, the first step in this arduous process is kind of done. Next one is the approval of conceptual designs for the new branch library, but here you see that we put ourselves through the same stuff. That's perfect.
Good evening. Again, item ninety is the new branch library. The applicant, let's call them our friends, our partners. Is the American County Library District. The underlying ownership of the building site is last year, the Litchfield Park. The tentative address is fifty-three ninety North Litchfield Road. The request and presentation for this evening is a ten thousand square foot. American County Branch Library at the Rancho La Loma Homestead. This is another one, a long time coming, a long conversation that, a very similar matter as the La Loma Homestead Planning Committee. This was a plan by Supervisor Max Wilson about twenty-one years ago now, and. There was momentum. There's actually a lot of files with Wally Danny copied, talking about their enthusiasm. To have consideration for a branch library up here at the homestead, and they even included a site plan as far as where it should be located. And it was actually where the academy is going, so we're about a hundred feet north of their desires back in two thousand four. I'd like to thank Max Wilson back then for those efforts and certainly for Clint Hickman before he left his supervisory role. At the end of last year, his contribution of the five million dollars in this community investment fund to get this going. And be giving another compliment here on top of our hill. Now, as far as the site plan goes, this one's a little bit more busy, but I'll break it down for all those. Now, as we saw, the main entry point for the school is just located here to the south. Set turning left to go to the school, you turn right to go to the library. The main, the library itself is located north, south along Litchfield Road. It faces west. It has a deep arcade, because as anyone that's tried to open a door that faces west and you burn your hand. This is going to be prevented and we'll show it in the fancier photos as far as we are going to not have that occur. The other thing, and I'm talking ahead of my slides, but just to be aware as we get there. Large windows and books don't work well to get, the county has learned from a couple of their other locations and surprise. The biggest windows tend to ruin their media, ruin their RFID tags. And really are a detriment to what they're trying to accomplish as far as the use of their space, so. This site, I wouldn't say sixteen amendments, I'd say maybe two, two and a half amendments to get to where we are today. Is very particular, not only in the Litchfield Park stylings, but as well as the library's mission to be successful. The majority of the parking area is located on the west side of the building. The IDA stalls are here up front. There's a loving zone for the staff entry here at the north end of the site. The other thing that this site does include that is unique but necessary is eighteen golf cart stalls. Where those stalls are located here along the south side, closest to the main entry point. Through our other projects, as far as the roundabout, the roundabout includes an underpass. We expect that to be part of our pathway system and have carts. Coming up to La Loma and then entering the main driveway and parking here. We put this as centrally as we could for not only the theater, but the library, the museum, the park. To serve the whole of the homestead up here as well. The other, frankly, radical idea was how to do a book drop. Right now, our book drop is right outside my door. You have to park or park on the fire lane and run in to drop your book. We talked to the manufacturer of those book drops, and we asked them a very simple question, I thought. Because we drive on the left and we like to put the book outside our car window into that book drop. You either face the wrong direction of travel and you get into a head-on situation where the car is going in the opposite direction. Or some of the libraries have them sitting in an island surrounded by the parking lots. And then the poor library page has to go stand in the middle of the street to enter the book drop. The line, the manufacturer that booked up had never considered these safety concerns. Unfortunately, in my previous lives in other cities, pedestrian safety was an ongoing concern and issue. We solved that. By putting this as a one-way traffic. So now, when you wanna drop your book, you come one-way traffic right here, that knuckle. That larger area of pavement is the book drop. You don't have any opposing traffic. You don't have anything to worry about. In fact, if you're pulled over to drop the books, people can still get by, leave the site. That also creates less conflict points so close to that main entry driveway. As far as the interior space goes, again, you can see the arcade and the columns here that face west, the main entry, the circulation desk is right up front. This is carefully considered for safety reasons, because now they have clear sightlines to the kids' space, the teen's space, and the adult's space. And we can't solve every sightline because book shelves are tall and have lots of books. So there are gonna be areas that aren't perfectly seen, but the areas that we wanted to have the greatest sightlines are the ones. To the kids and the teens area, which are shown here on the south end of this building. There's periodicals, there's areas for studying. There are two study rooms, excuse me, right here. As well, the staff area is here at the north end of the site. This is where we have, I'd say, less windows, less architectural features. And the two things that drive them crazy are the fire riser room, mechanical room. Usually you see these with a big blank metal door. It's painted with a big fire department sign on it. He left, so I hope he doesn't mind me saying this. I don't think they're very slightly. We wanted to hide those just. The other big part of this library is the programming space for council meetings or any sort of special events that want to occur. This is. A significant upgrade in size to where we're standing today. There'll be a storage room. As well as its adjacency to the bathrooms. There are minutes and windows and a family restroom here at the southeast corner of the building. Here's a look at the flat colorless elevations, but how that looks in real life is more akin to this. So certainly, everything that we're hoping for. We are trying our darndest within that five million dollar budget to achieve everything that you see before you. Again, the windows have been carefully considered, not only for sightlines, but also for media storage and making sure there is no damage to those books. Those windows are complimentary across the library, so you do have. Very clear sightlines from one side to the other. These are intentionally chosen as far as having those direct views into around its library. And certainly along Litchfield Road. I couldn't get rid of this door because it's an emergency exit and it's required, but it's a little less slightly here along Litchfield Road. Otherwise, we've done everything we can to beautify and stick with that Litchfield Square classic style. The other thing, as far as, this is the exterior, the interior finishes are as shown, is the primary color being our classic Santa Barbara, our classic Litchfield Park white. These are accent colors, but don't think of this as large color blocks. This isn't going to be, you know. Twenty, thirty, forty feet runs of these bright bold colors. These are accents in the sense of being accenting. We have some Spanish tile that's around some areas of the drinking fountains. This is the tiling that will be within the bathrooms. All of the cabinetry will be the classic, it's called a dark brown, an expressive brown color. We had ongoing conversations about what is our look and feel. I think that was the majority of the conversation, is actually understanding the interior and the exterior finishes. And we moved away from some of the more contemporary rays, which just does not make sense for us in our library, our standards. Now, as far as the analysis goes, I've talked about this already, as far as we'd like to thank the county board supervisors. County Library District for being our partners in this, specifically for Max Wilson and his initial efforts. And for Clint Hickman and that five million dollar contribution before he left office. And certainly along with the school district campus to the south, our friends at PW Litchfield Heritage Center moving right along. I got an updated schedule from them today, which is looking very promising. It's all coming together very suddenly. And when I came here, I thought I was working towards semi-retirement, but we decided to do Litchfield Square and La Loma at the same time. And I'm gonna get a haircut eventually, but when I, when I have time. So our recommendation for you is not by any sort of stipulations, it's to approve the county library. It's PZ twenty-five thirty-one at fifty-nine thirty, or fifty-three ninety, excuse me, North Litchfield Road, and it's subject to the exhibits within your packet. You have any answering questions? And Jennifer, once again, is representing the architectural team.
How many people work at the library on an average day, or how many people work at this library on an average day?
Mayor, Councilor Frasier. Believe, I'm gonna look to Jennifer after I answer this question to confirm, it's somewhere around six. People are on staff at any point. Fair, fair, okay. So that would include the manager, a couple pages, you know, the. The circulation desk is part of those gonna help you, and then probably about two librarians on staff at all times here. I think it's about the same number, around five to six at any time.
Reason why I ask is thirty percent of the building is dedicated to back a house. You know, I think that the big selling point to the community was a much bigger library. And you've got thirty percent of the building is dedicated. I'm very sensitive to, to the needs of employees. We've got a four hundred and fifty square foot break room. We've got a four hundred and fifty square foot office space with. Seven cubicles. We've got a lot of space back a house that's not dedicated to the community, that's dedicated to. Six members on an average day. I, I just, I, I feel like. That should be reduced and that there should be more space dedicated to the library and to the community. You know, based on, you know, what the community, what the city has promised. You know, I don't know how to modify this floor plan to, to make sure that they do have adequate space. You know, they do need office space. They do need a break room. But it is about thirty percent of the building that is back a house.
The issue of, of the, excuse me, the issue of the actual layout of the floor, the floor plan itself. Is something they could come back or not, that let hold up the whole building if we start wanting to have.
Mayor, Councilor Frasier, I would encourage, and I'm gonna tag out to Jennifer just to explain. How things are according to library's missions and library's needs as our librarians in this matter. To better answer your question, Mayor, the quick answer to your version is, should there be additional discussion? That wouldn't, that wouldn't change the discussions this evening. It certainly could be stipulated as far as a consideration or requirement to modify that interior space. Our conversation for you this evening is on design of the building. But certainly, any sort of modification to their building plans would take a bit of time, yes.
I would like to know if the community was solicited for their input on what they wish to see with this new library.
Councilor Frasier, to my knowledge, but I'll turn it to Matthew as well. After the initial acceptance of this donation or investment by the county board supervisor. I don't know what additional steps the county library district has taken. To my knowledge, I don't believe that we've had any specific. Shret or open house about programming that space, but can you add to that?
Councilman Allen, thank you for the question. A lot of the design and the features, for example, for the study rooms, came from discussions with American County Library staff. As far as things that they got requested from their guests, from people that visit the library, were things they would like to see. I spoke about the line of sight. That was something that came from staff, but study rooms, I remember specifically being some that people had requested. I do remember that one. I'm, I'm trying to remember. We did a survey with, with library patrons last summer, but we didn't do that. Library district staff did. I would have to think about the questions that were in the survey, but I wanna say that most of the things that are different, that are involved in this one. Came from library staff recommendations, as far as things they wanted to see. It very well could have been in that survey that was done by library staff. But to be honest, I don't remember the questions.
I, thank you, because I think what is clear here is that, you know, thirty percent. To Councilman Frasier's point, is, is focused around the library staff, which they do have needs, but I think that. We have this amazing opportunity right now to get it right for the larger community, and I just. It feels like we are going into this very quickly, and I wanna make sure that we're very intentional because. This, we're not gonna build another library, so like, I wanna make sure that we honor the Denny's. We honor the vision for this library. It fits with the cultural space on the homestead. And I see a little piece for the kids' section. I, I would like to see if we could, and up another design for this.
With, with all due respect to your, into your concerns. If we're going to see another design of this, I wanna know what it's gonna cost. We've been down this road before on government projects with one council member who insisted on art in a tunnel. And we spent over a hundred thousand dollars trying to put dents and concrete and some paint. On it, because of the revisions and the revisions and the revisions. And I don't wanna have some of that five million dollars be eaten away in tons of engineering stuff. So what, what stage are you at with these plans?
Vice Mayor, members of council, nothing moves forward without this council's consent. So we are, we are close to the finish line, but that does not mean we cross the finish line without your approval.
With all the engineering, the design, the electrical, the AC, mechanical, everything's already been done on these plans?
The, the short answer is to, to this design, yes, they have. If there is amendments or considerations that are coming out of this conversation, then those can be adjusted and will be adjusted accordingly.
I, I would be opposed to any adjustments unless we knew what they were gonna cost.
I'm gonna look back towards this.
Thank you. Mr. Rest Mayor, any, these are ninety-five percent plans currently, correct?
Mr. City Manager, we do have the one hundred percent plans available, however, that does not mean we need to accept that.
Mayor Council, if, if council would like to see us change the plans, revise the plans, if that's something you'd like to see us do, we can. One thing I would tell you that not to be an a-sayer, say that we shouldn't, is that it, it's time and money. It, it'll, it'll cost both. We, we can change the design if that's something council would like to do. We certainly can. That's certainly your prerogative to do so. But it, it will add some more time onto the project on a tight schedule, and it will cost more money. I'm not saying that we can't. It's just that that would just be because the, the plans are pretty far along, and top of my head, I thi, I think these plan, I think we're about four, four fifty in plans at this point.
Four hundred and fifty thousand?
I, I believe so.
In plans?
And, and plans, the, and et cetera. Yes, sir. Again, we can do that. I'm not saying we can't. I just want you to be aware of that, that it will affect timeline. And it will affect some of your cost. And of course, that project design cost is part of that five million. So if we spend more on design, that will also fit what we, what we can spend on the building from discussions that we've had. Again, not saying that we should, that we shouldn't do it. I just thought we should put that up.
How did this design come about? Did, did we do this? Did the county do it? Did the librarian have input?
Mr. Rest Mayor, so our staff has worked with ADM. ADM designed our free project. They've designed this project as well. Our staff has been involved in these discussions. Library staff has been very involved in these discussions as far as what their needs were for facility, for facility needs. As far as actual layout of the floor plans, if that makes sense. The actual, as far as the conceptual design, as far as what it would look like, started with Susan Chernetsky.
Right.
Yes, sir, that's correct, but as far as the actual layout, there were a lot of hands involved in that again, such as city staff, library staff, ADM, etcetera.
And library staff, you mean the Maricopa County Library District staff?
That's correct, sir.
Not our staff, cuz we're not gonna run and operate, the county's gonna run and operate, so we're building it to whatever requirements they. Seem to think they need and want.
That's right, they've been involved in discussions as far as what their needs were for the facility.
Yeah, and I, and I'm, I'm not supportive of the idea of redesigning the building or changing and redressing enough. The only thing I was trying to get at is whether it's possible to take a look at. The use of space at this staff end of the building, and some of these spaces are not gonna probably change, like the electric room and the fire room, that's not gonna change. But the amount of space that is devoted to the, the open office area, the break room. Courier receiving room. I, I think a lot of those spaces, it, it might be that they could be brought down. And if you bring them down, you move some walls, you've got more space over there, open area space that can be used in the library itself. As opposed to offices that are, you know, that are used at some, you know, for some portion of the day by, you know, a small amount of staff, so.
Can I clarify my statement, so I think when I said design, I did not wanna complete redesign, I think. That you hit it more on the head with explore reusing some of the space differently or using some of the space differently.
Right, the question is whether we could maybe move some of these walls a little bit, creates more space in the open area of the library. And slightly less space devoted to the staff. Without impacting the staff in a way that so, you know, that makes their, makes their working environment, you know, or working environment.
You, you can't do that though, Mayor, without having the electrical engineers, mechanical engineers, all the, the air balance redone. I mean, you're, you're talking.
It's true.
Quite a bit of money, we, we're not talking a couple thousand, we're talking a lot of money.
Yeah.
You start moving one wall, the ripple effect, and I know this unfortunately firsthand. Move one wall a foot, the ripple effect, it's to be massive, now the ceiling grids have all got a redesign, the lighting has to be redesigned. I mean, it gets, it, it starts, it, it's, it's a weather starts growing, it's still never sees the end of.
Mayor, if it's all right, I'd like to bring the architect up that can maybe speak more eloquently about the interior layout and its requirements.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, so I guess I'll just, I'll just say when we were programming this space, we did work collectively with Maricopa County Library District and. Randy and some of the other staff to determine what spaces we're going into, so. That back of house design is, was very heavily dictated by the, the library district. I, I do think it's possible to go back to them and question, you know, do we need all this space, would you rather have more? Space for the, for the stacks, for the reading areas, they were very. Sensitive to the fact that this was a pretty small building, it's only a ten thousand square foot footprint. So we had limited availability for the reading areas and, and things like that, so. If the direction from council is, is to, to go back and re-study that, we can absolutely do that, but the first call would be to. Lena Sherman and her team at the library district because they are really the users of the space. And we would want to make sure that their needs are being met, they have libraries all over the valley that are very similar. We went to several of them, we looked at them, what works, what doesn't work. And, and the, the creation of this plan was, was very much based on what works and what does not work for them. So I have to kinda go by their recommendation that we need this much room for sorter, sorters and, and filing. Could the break room be reduced, probably, absolutely, but that's, that's kind of their, the way they, they run their, their. Their staffing, so as far as like the electrical room, the fire riser room, those things would not change, they would still be. Pretty much the same. Yes, there might be some additional design fees involved in the, the, the massaging of the. You know, the library versus back to house, but ultimately, it's very doable at this point.
But the Maricopa County Library District gave direction in, into this. So that the plans that you put in front of us are ones that, that they gave, this is our, what we prefer to have in this space.
Absolutely, yes, yes, we had programming meetings with them, we had several milestone page turns along the way to, to show. Them the progress, we had, you know, weekly email or phone call conversation back and forth, making the adjustments with, with them very closely.
Give you a percentage of space to use or a footprint that they wanted to use to get to this amount of office space, or did it just naturally flow?
Um, I don't think it was presented as a percentage, it was more of, we have, we need space for seven cubicles. And we need a break room to sit a certain amount of people. And we, you know, a lot of it is based off of their other, their current libraries and how their, their size of their collections, a lot of these. The sorter room, the workroom is based on the size of their collection because it's not just. You know, you've got books coming in, they have to sort them, they shovel them, they move them, you have, you know, online reservation, people are coming in. Sending books across the valley.
One of the things you said is they, they specifically requested space for seven cubicles.
Yes.
So they're, I would assume their staffing is gonna be different than what we're anticipating at this point, if they're asking for seven cubicles and a break room to fit a staff the same size.
And you gotta, if they got an office manager, so they're gonna eat right there.
Correct, so, yes, it is a significant portion of a ten thousand square foot building, if you're building a thirty thousand square foot building, it would probably be about the same size office. The significantly less portion, they're, they're using the space for the amount of bodies they're gonna have actually working. It is, it is a, a large portion, but it is a smaller library going in.
They're gonna have two shifts, I mean, they're open more than forty hours a week, I presume, with weekends and stuff, so they have to have.
I mean, they're not gonna be working in a barn hall, I mean, we're, we wanna have a good facility for people who wanna work there.
But I'm wondering, maybe wasn't six people working in there, they've got two shifts, if you got six in there at one time, you may need twelve people for training to.
Any, anything we say on this is a guess, cuz we don't know.
If you look, if you look at the floor plan itself and try to think about what could be moved and how much could you save, you know, save by downsizing this somewhat. There really isn't gonna be much more square footage picked up. Because the fire, the fire room's not gonna change, the electrical room's not gonna change, these study rooms are not gonna change. The officers, the officers, manager's office is probably not gonna change by much cuz it's not that big, so you'd really have very, very little. Opportunity to save significant amount of space in the remainder of these. These rooms, if you're gonna have all the rooms, so. I am sensitive to the idea that we wanna make, we wanna make the library space as big as possible. But I don't know if at this stage, if it's realistic that it's gonna change in any significant way by changing the. Changing this floor plan unless you go in and make a whole, like a wholesale change that says that we're. I don't, I'm not sure which, I'm not sure which one you'd make, maybe you could downsize everything ten percent, you know, you're not gonna gain that many square feet, really.
It's three hundred square feet.
Yeah, so. It may not, it may not be a good use of time and effort to get that done.
Might.
Yeah, please.
Might be worthwhile to come and visit the library here during their operating hours and see what the space behind the. Doors and how it's being used.
And I'm, I'm not sure I'm gonna become an expert in how much space a librarian needs.
I wanna be an expert.
Well, I don't either, but, 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 you know, when I look at this, I, I don't have any real perspective. As to what they're doing behind the scenes, and so the space looks large and wonder if it's all that necessary.
Yeah, I mean, I look at the square footage and say, well, break rooms, what are four hundred square feet? So maybe we can save, maybe cut it back and make everybody sit a lot closer together and we save fifteen square feet or something, and it's not. We're just not, there's not enough, there's not enough space in there that's gonna change that much and make it a big effort to redo it.
And that's what I'm, I guess I'm not getting my point across, is I'm trying to say, maybe if we see how they're using their space here. We'll understand why this is laid out the way it is.
Yeah, I, if I may, yeah, I just, I just feel if, if the, the library district is gonna be running the, the library and the employees are gonna be their staff. They designed this how they want their office to be run, so. Could we go back and again, save ten or fifteen percent potentially, but we're talking about three hundred to four hundred square feet total in savings, that's a study room. I, I, I've just feel that they have set it up the way they wanna run it for their staff, the hire, to be able to say that's a, a good working environment for the people they want in there. I think we should, my feeling is I, I would vote to approve this as it stands.
Well, we're at this, we're at the stage that if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the proposed conceptual designs for. PZ two-five dash three-one for the approximate location of fifty-three ninety North Litchfield Road. In accordance with materials that have been presented at the meeting, you're welcome to make a motion.
So moved.
And I'll second that.
Mayor, if I could, can I ask a quick legal question?
You're gonna ask, yeah.
I will explain.
I'm gonna defer that to the legal, to the attorney.
Lawyer. It's a legal question for the architect to make sure that the family restroom doesn't provide details, I just wanna make sure it complies with. ARS forty-one, one, four, four, four.
If it doesn't, it will.
Are you asking me if the single user restroom complies with accessibility ADA, I don't know that.
No, one, it, in this, I, I bring it up cuz it got missed with the new city hall that just opened up in Bisbee yesterday. It's a state statute that requires that there be a, in a restroom that's accessible by both male and female. That has both a baby changing and an adult changing station in it, so.
Yes, it, it does, so the family, the family restroom that's located here is. It's, so just to give you some perspective, these, these two rooms right here are also what we call the single user. And so these are size, like kind of minimum size to be accessibility requirements, and you can see how much bigger this one is, and that is exactly that. There's space right here for a full-size adult changing station. And, and the li- the library district, you know, made sure that that was in there as well, we did ask if they wanted us to have. An adult changing station and a baby changer, and they said just put the adult changing station. If, if you know legally otherwise that we should be doing both, then we will absolutely.
You can have one as long as it accom- it accommodates both a, a baby and an adult, and if you have a larger one, it definitely accommodates. The baby chair.
Yeah.
I know sometimes it gets overlooked and then the change for that. Can be costly as well because of the requirement to have enough space between that changing station and the rest of the restroom.
Yeah, yeah, we have it, it's noted in our specifications and the backing that's required to put in the wall to support, support it and everything.
Great, good question. Okay, I think there's motion to second, is that for?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion or questions about the motion?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just wanna say that I, I'm not an architect and I'm not a librarian, so I gotta rely on you guys to do what is best for this project. And I am still against any kind of changes, cuz I know from personal experience, even though for one wall. The amount of detail that has to go into it is astonishing.
That extra foot of space in your office. Any further discussion about the motion? All's in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? We have, motion passes six to one. Next item is the Hilltop. Laboratory Construction Services, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This item is to prepossess construction services expenditures, so the reason why I wanna do the, this way. Is that, as you know, the library timeline is very tight and we're getting very close, as Randy said, plans are about a hundred percent now, we've been working, looking at several different companies. As possibly building this, so we would ask you guys to approve this up to this amount for the mayor that can sign. So that when we have a contractor lined up in the next few weeks, we can go ahead and sign the contract and get them to work. Obviously, there is a cap on that and how, on how much the project could cost. Normally, you wouldn't do this, normally we would ring you to say this is contractor X, Y, Z, we're asking them to approve your contract. But this would give us the authority again, once we have the contractor and lined up, to go and have the contract on, the mayor would sign it. But it's, it's just to give us some leeway, some leeway here and give us some time because we need it, cuz it's a short timeline. And again, it is capped at five million dollars, which was the project amount we had planned for.
Okay, questions from council?
Does five million include the, the engineering, architecture, get on top of this? Are we talking four and a half billion?
Yeah.
And then maybe four and a half.
Four and a half.
Okay, no, it's not, that's what I'd read, and so how do you go about negotiating competitive price with these contractors? When they know you got a four and a half million dollars in cash, but don't do it?
To be honest, it's, it's been a, a very hard fight to beat people down, think they could possibly build it for that.
And we've had people dropping out, saying.
Yes, we have.
If we're, if we can find, if we can find a contractor that can build it for four and a half, if I'm two, they can build it for four and a half, why would I hate it?
We, we had two drop out this week, that's right. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, one of the comment I would like to say on this is that, um, I, I didn't say it before, but. I just wanna thank council for our staff and for all the work they've put into these projects, the library and Agrofree as well, it's. I, I don't wanna miss anybody but to work with Agrofree, to work with ADM, to work with city staff, so many people, so many groups. There's been so much work that's went into these designs, so much playing, so many conversations, arguments, arguments over what is Santa Barbara St. and what's not. Arguments over what fits at Litchfield Park and what does not, so many conversations that go into this. And it was, it's, it's been a long time coming to get these things where they are, and I know, um, if, if you don't mind, indulge me for a second. I know for me, you know, you, you, you get to a point in life where there's things that you're really proud of that you wanna call and tell somebody about, and this is, this is one for me, but anyway. Staff, everyone. Like to make a motion.
Please do so.
Like to move to approve.
Construction services expenditure up to five million, four and a half million.
Four and a half.
It's, it's five, four and a half for.
Four and a half plus five.
Yes, four and a half plus.
Four and a half, we already approved the expenditure for the engineering.
Okay. All right, make the motion as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All's in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Next is the fiscal year twenty-six tentative budget. We have a presentation from Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And tonight I have for you the fiscal year twenty-six tentative budget adoption. Which is my favorite meeting of the year. Uh, so this is a three step process, it does take three meetings to get to final adoption. So tonight is the tentative budget adoption, which adopts the maximum expenditure. So once we adopt this tonight, that sets our ceiling, so we can make changes between now and the final in June, but the ceiling is adopted tonight. Next month, and then it will be published for two weeks in the newspaper, and then we will have a public hearing on June eighteenth. At that meeting, we will adopt the final budget for the city, our special districts, as well as some personnel items. And our five-year capital plan, and then the final budget will be a special meeting on July eighth. It'll be a quick Zoom meeting, it's really a formality to set those tax rates for the special districts, so we can get that information to Maricopa County. Just a few highlights from the budget, we went over it in detail at our work-study session in March. But I do just wanna point out that our budget is balanced, our ongoing expenditures are covered by ongoing revenues. And with money left over after that, our capital improvement budget, it includes thirty point six million dollars in projects. And it accounts for sixty-five percent of our total budget, we do have. Quite a big CIP list with some committed projects, including the library, hilltop improvements. And several road improvements. So the funding for our capital improvement projects, it's a combination of our one-time revenues of city cash reserves. And then there's capacity in this budget to issue bonds if we so choose to, and then to accept any grant funding. Also have, we maintain solid reserves, it is a council policy that we set aside fifty percent of our operating budget. So that's seven point five million, that's actually in the legal budget documents, set aside its money that cannot be spent. We did have a few changes since the April. We did have a few changes since the April work-study session that came out of that meeting. Um I'll just touch on a few of them and then happy to answer any questions if there's any specific questions. Um we did, Matthew and I and Tricia, we met with the Avondale Senior Center. To discuss the services that they provide for pres- for our residents. And they do spend about twelve thousand dollars. Um so we would like to add that as just a line item in community services rather than them coming and asking for on the allocation every year. We did add uh twenty thousand for fireworks for Fourth of July. Um we did, uh redo, I did reduce the city attorney's budget to one fifty and just moved some into um contingency. And we moved all of the road projects into fiscal year twenty-six. Um certainly, all of those will not take place in fiscal year twenty-six, but rather than us trying to guess when we think. A portion of the project will take place. We just decided to keep it clean and move it to all to this year. And the projects that don't get complete will just roll to the following year. Probably the biggest change that I needed to make was to add um bond capacity of up to sixteen point three million. Um that was necessary for me to keep us under our state expenditure limit. Um because any capital projects paid for with bond proceeds, we can exclude from that. So I'm not recommending that we actually issue bonds for that, but to make this puzzle work. Um I needed to um add that capacity. But when we get to that point of discussing um bonds, we will have a work-study session or two. Um I'll have multiple scenarios put together that look at different um forecasts if we hit. A downturn in our economy, um all sorts of different scenarios, different terms on the bonds. Um so this is just giving us capacity to make those decisions um during the year. So uh just a high-level summary, um. The uh July one twenty twenty-five fund balance is about twenty-nine point one million. Plus um one million revenues over operating, so a total of thirty point one million throughout the entire year. Um our one-time revenues of twenty point two million, again, that includes bond capacity of sixteen million. So total resources of fifty point three million. Once we subtract out all of our operations and our one-time projects of nearly thirty million, that will leave us an ending balance of twenty point seven million. And an unassigned fund balance of thirteen million. Um we did make a change to the personnel budget, and that was to change the um potential merit from up to four. Up, from an up to two to an up to four. And so this um reflects that change. This is Schedule A of the official budget. This is what will actually be published in the newspaper. So our grand total budget is fifty million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. When we compare this year to last year. Um the overall budget is increasing seventy-eight percent or twenty-two million. But the majority of that is in our capital budget. It's twenty-one million dollars over this fiscal year. Based on all of those uh projects identified in our C I P. Um the general fund itself is increasing eight point nine percent or just over a million. Uh we did go over um all of the significant changes during the work-study session, but I'll just point out a few of those. That was adding um two positions, adding a patrol officer, um the salary increases that we discussed. And um just to touch on our her budget, it is um two hundred and ninety-three thousand lower. But that's just because we got some of that um accumulated fund balance spent. And this year we are um planning to recommend to you um using one million of that for um the roundabout. And um that really concludes my presentation. Um there's a lot of information on this slide that was also in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions from council, questions or comments?
I would just like to thank Paige for all her work on the budget and for meeting with me. So many times to help me walk through it and understand it, and I really feel confident in her, what she brings to the city.
Any other comment?
I'm sure it's mayor. I was gonna say the same thing, Paige. Uh in in my year sitting here, I've never felt as comfortable with knowing what's going on with the budget. Like what you've been doing. It's been fantastic. And you presented it in a fashion where it's relatively clear for us, non-accountants, to. Understand what's really happening. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions from council? Seeing then, uh is there a motion to adopt the fiscal twenty twenty-six tentative budget?
So moved.
Good job. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tend to the budget is adopted. Next item is uh tentative streetlight improvement, slid budgets for twenty twenty-six.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um the slits are actually included in um. The overall city budget, but we do have them. As a separate item as well. Um just to give you a quick background on that. So we do have three streetlight improvement districts. And it's, it's pretty simple. There's streetlights within the parameters of these districts. Um A P S sends us the bill and we pay them and we assess um the property owners that live within the district. So we had um two unusual um events with this this list this year. They were also impacted by that class action lawsuit, so the slits also had to pay back um. Just over twenty thousand dollars. And then um the cost of electricity also increased um thirteen percent. So the total shortfall just from the increase in electricity was four hundred, or forty-nine thousand, five fifty. And then the refunds were twenty-six thousand. So we will need to over-assess this year to make up for those shortfalls. Um in fiscal year twenty-four, we had estimated for a ten percent increase. And it ended up not happening, so we had over-assessed. So in twenty-five, we were able to lower it because we built up that surplus, but then thirteen percent happened. So I'm hoping after this year, we get back more to a a smooth. Um expenditures and revenues, and we hit that five percent target for the fund balance. And that concludes my um update, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions about the tentative slid budgets? If not, is there a motion to adopt the tentative streetlight improvement district budgets for fiscal year twenty-six?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All right, next up is the introduction ordinance twenty-five dash two ninety-two amendment of purchasing policy.
Um thank you, Mayor and Council. Um this is to introduce ordinance twenty-five two ninety-two that will amend. Our purchasing policy. So the city is required to follow state statute um for construction projects as well as our own policies. Um statute does allow for cities to use um cooperative contracts. Which means either another city or government entity or a like a purchasing agent such as the One G P A. They have already gone out and done all of the soliciting and contracts. So it just gives us. Uh more flexibility, more options to enter into a contract with somebody that's already gone through that um procurement process. Um for job order contracting construction, it does need to be apples to apples. So for example, this is what we're looking at for the library. Um but statute does have a maximum one million dollars unless the purchasing agent. Has adopted an amount higher than one million. So we're um recommending to council that we set a maximum job order amount of five million. That will provide us with additional procurement and contract options that exceed construction, that will exceed one million dollars.
This is necessary for the library?
Yes, if we want to use a co-op.
And it's, it's important to note that this, this can apply to things in the future, but those contracts will have to come to be approved by the. Council in the future, so it's not, it's not approving entering into contracts up to five million. It's just giving the authority of deciding.
Mayor, I could point out that there are a number of municipalities throughout Arizona and in the valley. That have increased their job order con- contract limitation up to four to five million dollars. Uh to be able to accomplish that and. Where we've been looking and we've come across, there's a number of potential job order contracts that are under a co-op. And unless the co-op specifically provides for an increased amount. Then we have to go by the one million dollar limitation. Otherwise, we can go by whatever the city sets. So this allows the city a lot more flexibility when looking at various cooperative purchase contracts.
Limit this, the time and the cost are.
Any further discussion or questions about this introduction? If not, is there a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-five dash two ninety-two covering purchasing policy?
So moved.
This is the introduction, so we do not need to have roll call, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes and it's introduced. Next item is a consideration of a drainage easement for the Hilltop Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Mayor and Council, this is an easy one. I would like to thank Susie for being here with us tonight with Sun Health. So this is two drainage easements that we need for the Hilltop Project. This affects Agrofria, it affects the Hilltop as well. This would be for a drainage easement running east and west along the southern property line of the Hilltop Property. And also running north and south along Litchfield Road. That's basically the drainage has to go somewhere. So it would come down off the Hilltop again to that east-west drainage. Then go out Litchfield Road and down a drainage easement along Litchfield Road uh north to south. And there would be a pipe there that it connected into. That's what this is for, is for those two easements. You would see the two, the T C Es are in your packet as well. Those are between Sun Health, between Agrofria. But we put those in there just as a matter of reference so you could see them. Um one thing you will see is there's wording in the motion that gives us flexibility on these easements. We knew they would change a little bit between putting the packet together, what the final easements are. So this, the wording of the motion does give the flexibility, or we can change those easements as needed. I believe Sun Health is aware of that as well. So that is something that is being worked on. Welcome quickly.
Questions from the council? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the drainage easements are approved. We do have a requirement for an executive session, so is there a motion to go into executive session? Then our items. A through D, but I'm not sure we're gonna use A. City manager.
That's correct, so just B, C, and D.
B, so B through D, correct. Is there a motion to go in the executive session, items B through D?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session.
Good night, all.
Good night, Carter.
Oh, good night. Thank you, Susie. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you for breaking my record. I've been six to one.
For a regular meeting, when can we adjourn the regular meeting? Regular meeting, adjourn.